Calls me in order, some Stanford pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion approved? October's minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve October's minutes.
Second? All in favor, yep.
Alright.
Uh, new business, the 2025 salary ordinance.
Everybody get that? I emailed it to them.
Yep.
So, all we need is a motion and a second and a vote.
Can I get a motion to accept the 2025 salary ordinance?
I'll make a motion to accept the 2025 salary ordinance.
Second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, Valerie?
Valerie, you want to go first?
Sure, sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Valerie Schaefer. I'm the president of the Economic Development Corporation for Wayne County. Um, we come out and visit you every, every four years, um, when we renew the EDC's contract with Wayne County government to provide, um, economic development services for Wayne County. Uh, along with that is, um, funding from participating cities and towns that see a need to contribute and help pool resources from multiple jurisdictions that collectively help fund, um, the Economic Development Corporation office, and then also special projects that we initiate through the county, and incentives for, uh, companies to relocate or expand, um, here in the community. So, just wanted to come out and talk to you all, um, just let you know that the opportunity does exist for you to consider participating in countywide economic development, um, through the contribution of one half of your economic development income tax revenues. Uh, for Fountain City, this year you're, you're getting roughly forty-one thousand dollars a year in your edit tax, and so that would be one half of those funds if you decided to, um, contribute and participate in the EDC. Um, a little bit of what we've been up to, um, over the last four years, uh, we worked with sixteen different businesses to either locate new operations or grow existing operations throughout Wayne County. Um, those sixteen businesses are in the process of investing about five hundred and thirty-four million dollars, uh, across Wayne County. Uh, that's a lot in manufacturing, uh, but what in other sectors, um, as well. Along with that, there's the commitment of four hundred and forty-five new jobs, um, within those companies as well. Um, but we're really branching out of just business development. We recognize that community development is a very important component of what is needed because we need to enhance our quality of place in order to retain our population, and quite frankly, try to grow back some of the population that we've been losing since the nineteen seventies. So, the EDC has started to work in the community development space, um, through many different efforts. Um, a big part of that is downtown revitalization, um, trying to attract investors to revitalize our main streets, um, to help bring those main streets back to life, reinvigorate buildings, um, remove blight, and, and get more businesses in our downtowns. Um, another component of that is housing development. We know that housing is very critical, uh, for people to want to stay or move to a community, and so we've been working on a new housing program we're hoping to launch next year, um, for participating edit communities. Um, developers will have an opportunity to apply for funding, um, to extend infrastructure into platted unfinished subdivisions that have just been sitting, uh, because there aren't resources there to assist developers with that critical infrastructure so that we have buildable lots, so that we can build new homes. So, that's one program that we're hoping to launch next year. Um, through the help program, um, that Jeff led and might touch on here in a bit, um, we also supported, uh, edit communities through new playgrounds all across Wayne County. I believe there's five that have been initiated. Um, Richmond's still working on their project, but, um, through the edit tax pooled resources, we were able to invest ten thousand dollars into each of those parks to help create new opportunities for our kids and places to, safe places to play. Um, we're also helping to, uh, draw down as many state resources as we can. Um, so there's a program right now through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation that we're collaborating on, um, to try to buy for, uh, thirty-five million dollars that our region has allocated. Um, we're really pushing for a housing project and potentially some funding to help expand, uh, main streets, downtown revitalization, of grant programs to building owners, and then, um, take care of some blight within neighborhoods, um, as well as track a new housing development to the community. So, I just wanted to come and kind of share that, you know, the EDC, we've, we've been known for business development, and that's still a critical role of our office. We will still continue to try to, in, develop industrial parks to have shovel-ready land available so that we can recruit new industry and support our existing businesses, but we also understand the importance of quality of life and are trying to work with our communities to find meaningful ways to reinvest in quality projects, um, that you have on the horizon. Jeff, is there anything that I'm missing?
Just a, a couple of things I would add to that. Thirty years ago or so, when, uh, when the consolidated edit program was first conceived and the county council implemented the edit tax, uh, we talked to all the communities about participation. And at that time, as Valerie alluded to, the, the main focus, uh, of the Economic Development Corporation was business attraction, trying to get that next factory to land somewhere in Wayne County. But the intention, uh, being that, that the primary motivation for consolidated edit was to improve the economy of Wayne County, to help create jobs, to help businesses create jobs, so that no matter where you might live within the county, there would be jobs available. Uh, so that was the concept of the, of the consolidated, the shared, uh, approach to funding, uh, economic development. Uh, again, as Valerie alluded to, uh, the definition of economic development really has changed over the last thirty years, and now, um, is focused a lot more on, uh, quality of life, quality of place, being able to attract people and retain people that become the workforce for those businesses. And so, uh, people move to places where they're comfortable living, uh, and look for a job in that, in that location, rather than, um, previously people moved to where jobs were, whether that was a place they wanted to live or not. So, we encourage you to consider, um, joining the, the group of communities that contributes part of their economic development income tax to this consolidated edit program. Uh, there are many more opportunities, uh, for towns like, like Fountain City to receive, uh, support from that consolidated edit fund as we expand the definition of what economic development is. So, uh, we hope you'll consider that. I guess I would point out that as part of, uh, receiving the economic development income tax, whether or not you contribute part of that to the consolidated edit fund is, uh, for you to complete a, uh, a plan, a, a strategic investment plan or-
Capital.
Capital improvement plan, uh, and, and turn that in to, uh, to the county, to the auditor's office. Uh, so this is something that, that you all need to adopt, um, periodically to, uh, to be able to continue to receive the economic development income tax. So, I hope you'll take a look at that. If you have questions, Shane, don't hesitate to get in touch with me and we can work with you on, on how to complete that. But it is something you've, you've done in the past. I don't know how recently it's been done, but, uh, it is done periodically.
Yeah, I think every two years you're supposed to file a new plan and, and, um, kind of determine how you're planning to use your economic development income tax revenue, whether or not you contribute fifty percent or not.
So, I guess I'll stop there for a minute and ask if you have any questions about, uh, about the, the edit tax and, uh, participation in the consolidated edit program. It would be a contract that you would sign, uh, with the county commissioners, uh, to contribute half of, of the edit tax uh, to the consolidated edit fund. And if you don't have any questions about that, if I could take another couple of minutes and, and talk about, uh, our upcoming planning process. Uh, I came last year to talk to you about, uh, your willingness to participate in an application that we actually submitted to OPRAC, uh, for their stellar communities program. Uh, we did submit that application and were not selected as a finalist. Uh, but as the, the weeks go by, uh, we feel strongly that there's a need to do that planning. Uh, there are so many projects in the works, even with your Fountain City Forward Group, uh, and yourselves. There are things that, that you want to accomplish, that you're planning to do, you're hoping to do. Uh, there are funding streams out there for a lot of these projects, whether it be from OPRAC or NDOT, uh, or IHCPA. There are a number of state sources for funding. Um, and so, uh, what we have decided to do is to go through a planning process. The county is working with the Wayne County Foundation. We have, uh, we have raised funds, uh, about seventy-five thousand dollars that will pay to hire a consultant, HWC Engineering, that has worked with, uh, the county, with the foundation, and with, uh, our, our east-central Indiana region as they applied for ready funds. So, HWC is very familiar with Wayne County and eastern Indiana. So, starting in January, we will be working, uh, with them to go through a planning process that will include community engagement. We'll have a series of meetings. Uh, there'll be at least one meeting in each of the five school districts, uh, across the county, uh, where the schools will work with us to invite people from all over the school district to come to a meeting and, and talk about, um, what you aspire to in the, in the next five years or so, what kind of projects, uh, that, that they would like to see. Uh, and we certainly would hope that you all would participate. Uh, we are actually asking the communities to, to tell us that, in the, in the form of the, the town councils, that you will participate, uh, in that process so that we can work with you. And, uh, the plan would be that every community that chooses to participate will end up this process with your own plan. What projects you and your citizens would like to see accomplished in the next five years or so. They'll be, uh, working with HWC. They'll put together, uh, those projects in the form of a, a planning document uh, that will have information about that project, how much it might cost. Uh, things like, do you have site control for that project? And they will, uh, go through a series of questions that will help you understand that if you're going to apply for grant money, you need to have specific pieces of information available to be a part of that grant application, and they'll work with you to try to develop, uh, what you have and what you still need to get before you're in a position to apply. So, each community will have its own plan, and then the county as a whole will have a plan that incorporate the highest priorities from across the county. So, we're hoping to get all fourteen incorporated towns to participate. Uh, there is no charge to you. There's no cost to you. Um, the county and, and our partners, including the, the EDC, uh, Reed Health, um, the Wayne County Tourism Bureau, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce, are all participating in paying for that planning process. Uh, so it would be an investment of your time and, and, uh, energy in, in developing that plan specifically for Fountain City and giving input to the plan for the county. So, uh, we would ask you to, uh, to make a decision. You don't have to tonight, but, uh, we're, we're planning to start sometime in January, so the sooner we, uh, we know whether you're willing to participate or not, the better. Be happy to answer any questions on that.
Can we hold off and do that in December when our other two members are here?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Other than that, I don't know of anything. I don't have any questions for them.
I do on the commissioner's side, but that's-
Go right ahead.
Where do we stand out with the radios?
Uh, we have signed the contracts. Um, delivery will, will be a while. You know, the, the cost of the project went from the initial estimate of one point five million dollars to now three point one million dollars. Uh, we have, have cobbled together the funding that will be required to make that happen, so this is forty-plus years in the making. Uh, there will be, um, two towers that will be erected by a private company, um, and we will lease space to, to hang the, the radio equipment on those two towers. There's one in this area. I don't know exactly where it's located.
It's been a big secret, is what I've been told.
I, well, I think until they get all of the, all of the paperwork and the contracts signed, lease agreements and so on, they probably don't really want to share that too, too broadly. Uh, but it's, it's in the works. It, it will all be, uh, wrapped up by the end of the year. Then it'll probably take a year, six months to a year, um, to get everything in the ground and order the radios and the equipment ordered. Uh, but, uh, the, uh, recommendations from the, the task force that was put together that included folks from fire and police, uh, all across the county, uh, we are following that in terms of the number of, of, uh, mobile units and handheld units and pagers that were, uh, were recommended. So, uh, we have, we have signed those, uh, those contracts and are moving forward. So, sometime in twenty twenty-five, uh, that will-
Because I know it's been a big discussion next door. We got several homeless guys that don't have a way to communicate-
Sure.
That we know. In our portables now, we can't hear them, even if they're coming from White Water Road, so.
So, that should be, I mean, the, the whole design of the plan was to eliminate those challenges. Uh, and like I said, it's been forty years where you've had those deficiencies, and, and hopefully this will take care of at least ninety-nine percent of the, of the problems.
And for everybody that don't know, that's the Wayne County Fire Department. It's the only ones we're doing, right? Richmond's not going on it.
Uh, Richmond is not, but, uh, they will have access to radios that, that will, uh, allow them to communicate.
But you're going to eight hundred, right?
Correct. Strictly. Well, I mean, we're still going to keep our VHF's for on-scene-
Right.
-operations, but VHF's for everything.
And this will tie into the state system.
I know Kerry's been talking with Wes, you know, the police department does have two repeaters that can be put into of your engines, which would enable you, use your VHF, which will bounce off of it, the police department did use, and it gave us a wide range as far as that goes, especially up front calls.
I just hadn't seen or heard if the vote passed or-
Absolutely.
That was my only question on that. That is it? Department reports. Uh, I've got Kerry's right here in front of me, I think. Um, he's got three cases drawn, one active, for a total of the year for thirty-five. Uh, oil change is done, about both of them?
Yeah. No. Was it both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the Dodge is going to need brakes soon. Uh, currently taking a forty-hour Part 107 course. One DT's with the sheriff's department. Uh, all officers of command completed their mandatory twenty-four hours. Um, preparing for the radio switch-over for their new system. Do you have anything else?
Hello?
I thought you weren't reading, we weren't reading-
Okay, we won't then.
If you need to vote on anything.
Hey, one question, um, me and Kerry were talking. His switch-over, because we, you know, approved as far as paying for all of that stuff.
Oh, uh-huh.
I'm looking at you. I'm not looking at the wall. Did you pull the receipt on that?
I can't find it.
On the invoice? Because I know we had allocated funds for that. I wanted to make sure that it was all paid for.
For what? Why don't we-
For his-
When we, when we approved, when all this started with the changeover with the new system and all that stuff, um, it was approved to take the money out of the edit. I want to find out for sure that was all paid, which I'm usually pretty good at doing that and-
If I have the invoice and it got paid.
I need to find the invoice and look at what it exactly said.
Okay, well, tomorrow tell me the company that I paid and I can find, pull it up and find the invoice. Okay?
And yours are going all encrypted, correct?
Yeah.
Will ours be encrypted?
It will have that capability.
But we're not doing it.
The radio itself has that capability, is my understanding.
Okay. Um, things need to be voted on. Dave, do you want to talk about this stuff, bud?
Which one?
I don't know.
Uh, so he's got, um- I think-
The water truck, what's, what he got there?
Uh, well, he was on seventy the other day. Said he got some death wobble. So, said he had two quotes called Greensport, another small shop. Both said, they both, both of them told them that they wanted the truck to come in so they could visually see it. So, wasn't sure if you guys wanted us to take it in. It's just-
It has to be taken in in order for it to be fixed. I thought he had already taken it in.
Well, he took it to Speedy Pete's and I got a quote from Speedy Pete's to find out exactly what was wrong, hoping that he would be able just to call and tell him what needed to be done to get a quote, but obviously he didn't want to give him one just by that.
In order to give him a quote, the truck actually has to do that.
So, he's going to have to take it to the other two places because per policy, I have to have three quotes. I don't want to get called out on that on my audit like I did this last-
We got one from Wetzel and one from Speedy Pete's, so.
Okay, so he needs, he'll have to take it to Greensport to get it started.
Typical board wobble. Death wobble.
I ain't never had it in my life.
Give it time.
What's the matter with it?
Just like, uh, there's a-
Well, right there, it's all a problem. Don't go seventy.
The school lift pump.
Um, well, we could only get one quote from that. Uh, I think that was the one where they, they wouldn't quote against it because they're like sister companies, you know, something like that.
The pumps usually we were only, Ron was only able to ever obtain one quote because there's only one company around here to get it from, so you can only get what's there you can get. What do you need?
Should be right over seventy anyway.
That's what Mike said.
Things done, things done.
Well, if he was on seventy coming back, and that's when it happens, as far as that goes, we need to-
Well, I got reded on seventy and I was going sixty-five and they were going seventy-five.
What was this? The lift station one?
Uh, for Cooley that should be.
Yep. Is the Cooley one the only one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the lift station pump for down the school replacement pump or pump replacement is thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for Cooley to do it.
And that's original, the one that was put into?
So, that's what, ninety-two?
I don't know. I'm not that old enough to know.
Uh, I need, we need to get a, uh, mhm, one of those.
Motion.
Yeah, one of those. I need a motion to-
Now, what is that?
The Cooley, the lift station pump for down the school.
Oh, you mean you guys can't install it?
No.
Oh, okay.
We don't have the equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, that one's pretty-
Yeah, I didn't know. The other pump that Ron, in the past, it wasn't, we never had to pay anybody to install them, but I don't think it probably was anything like that.
Well, this one's the, if this is the OG original one, so.
Yeah.
So, I need a motion to accept Cooley's bid for the lift station pump.
I'll make a motion for Cooley's to replace the lift pump at the school.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't understand.
Let me-
Look, Speedy, Speedy Pete's-
Right.
Is two hundred dollars less, but I know labor, four twenty-five, two thirty. Parts, Speedy Pete's was higher. So, how can that be?
Um-
I mean, Speedy Pete's-
Well, I don't have to be-
Instead of this higher than Wetzel, but yet Wetzel is two hundred dollars higher.
Yeah, but the thing is though, like, if you have it done at Wetzel, you have a two-year parts and labor warranty with them. With Speedy Pete's, you don't have that, so that's what you have to look at also.
At mine, because they guarantee their work.
Where?
Doesn't make sense, but whatever.
But we have to wait for another quote for that, so.
Yeah.
What else you got?
Uh, the, you guys should have quotes for the trees or the tree at the park. So, you, they're, they're still going to hold like the discount rate for the-
Is that the one, one of them over, around the gazebo there?
Yeah, to take the rest of it out.
And then where's the other one?
Uh, the other two should be the ones up here.
Yeah, we already talked, that was that last meeting.
I think it's just ones over here. The ones near the tree.
Well, this is tree, two medium tree removal.
That's from last month, and they've still been laying at your spot.
Yeah, because they voted on that one.
Can we get treated?
We, we already voted on that.
We weren't here last month.
I'm sorry. I was supposed to, I was packing my bags.
On that down there?
There-
No, I did not.
There should be.
What?
The-
I only have the one from last month.
See if it's on my desk. It might be. I know I got the one.
Tree amigo quoted up down there. Please. While she's looking for that, David, what else you got?
Uh, the gazebo for the repairs.
Coffin Day weekend, on Sunday, when the storm rolled through, we had a fairly large limb fall on one tree and go through the gazebo, and they were wanting, the place that built it will come out and fix it for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I don't find-
Back to the way it was before the tree fell on it.
Maybe you did have the right one and not the one you got.
Yep.
So, this is the one, I wrote what they already did. Okay, so you did have the right one.
But anyways, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that will come out of, the word that we discussed about the gazebo, was that edit? I just need a motion to accept the, have the Stony Creek, because Stony Creek Structures repair our gazebo.
I make a motion to Stony Creek.
To fix the gazebo.
Structures to fix our gazebo.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
I couldn't read it that way.
So, now you can go back to the tree.
Back to the tree. Uh, there's a quote here for seventeen hundred and ten dollars for, I guess it's two trees or whatever. It may be down, and these are in the park, correct?
What's it state on there?
Tree two, medium tree removal, stump cut down at ground level, order degree removed, stump grinding not included, included.
Yeah, but we need a price for the stump.
It's on nine twenty-three, so it has to be for the park. Because it's the same day as this one.
It's only one tree, so I think that's only-
Tree number two, they numbered the tree two. Yeah.
We need a price for the stump grinder.
We need those stump grinding in it too, so. But I think that tree needs to come down because if not, we're going to keep falling onto the gazebo and-
I just get a price for the stump grinding and bring it back for next month.
It's got that little star thing beside it, and that means that unless stated in writing, they won't grind the stump.
I don't know if they'll hold because they're, they were still giving us, they were still holding us-
I don't know if they'll hold because they, they were still giving us, they were still holding the discounted price. Since they, half the tree was the big limb they took out, so I don't know if they'll still hold that discounted price or.
Well, they would just add to this for the stump grinding.
Right.
Right.
And that's been in, pretty much to them multiple times to everybody that we have to have a stump grinding, 'cause it's in our ordinances. Have a tree taken down, that it has to be ground out, so when we're getting quotes, we need to make sure that we're getting everything on it. As far as that, to be able to get approved.
Okay. So do we wanna vote on this one? Take it down or we wanna wait until next month and?
Have them add the grinding to it.
Have them add the grinding to it.
Probably would be best to have an actual price of what it's gonna cost instead of guessing.
Yeah, 'cause last time we did that, it wound up costing us more.
Motion to table that. Till next month?
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
Next. The, uh, the meter at the plant. Um, we found out that it's, um, I, I had all this written down in my notes, so. It's a bunch of big words, um, so if our mag meter fails. Uh, the meter that's on, you know, that tells us how much water's coming in through our wells and whatnot. Is the incorrect meter, um, the quote you have is the correct meter that should be on there. We had Scott Dunlap come out and verify that as well.
It has to do with the flow.
Yeah.
Not something, I think, in items.
Yeah.
That's caught when they were here last, yeah.
So, the quote I have is for, I guess, the meter and then, I don't know what. Pro coder, integrated, whatever it may be. For a total of two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents. So, it's a bunch of big words. Yeah, it is.
Utility supply, yeah.
From utility supply.
Make a motion for utility supplies to fix the meter.
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aight.
What else you got? Uh, I think it, uh, I was, I was gonna bring up about, there's been a couple of leaf piles, I mean, I. Up until the rain, I was, I was being pretty good, trying to, as much time as I could spending out, picking up the leaves. But there's been several leaf piles that have a lot of grass clippings. Um, sticks, trash, and, you know, if a stick's any bigger than a number two pencil. It clogs the leaf back, the leaf back, and it's, it clogs it ten times as much, especially when the leaves are wet. So, I was just gonna ask if, everybody watching, keep your sticks and stuff out of the leaves. And to bring your leaves all the way up to the curb, there's a lot of people that have a chain link fence that's. Six feet off the road with a, I mean, they put them all in a pile, but it's way back and. I don't like to drive a dump truck in somebody's grass or, and I gotta get out and move a four-foot tall by twenty-foot long pile of leaves. Up to the leaf back, so.
I'll issue another alert, too.
Yeah. That's all I had. Okay.
They don't care.
Visitor storm.
Um, I am, my name is Casey Howell and I'm from D and J Homes. We have a property, one eleven South E North Street, lot number two. We're wanting to remove the current mobile home that's on it because it needs to be taken out. And we're wanting to put a new mo, newer model in on that spot, and we just wanna make sure. There weren't any special permits we needed from the council.
How was, how did we work that?
They already called me and asked me about it and I, of course, informed them that they'd have to come to a council meeting because the way that. You guys have been handling it, when a mobile home gets pulled out. They, you, they have to have your permission to put another one in because you were working towards getting the bad mobile homes. Out of town and not letting them come back.
Right.
Right.
So that's like.
And it wasn't, then we put in.
Greg again did his out there on East North Street on that, the individual, he had to bring in his plans and show you the mobile home and. And basically prove to you that it was going to increase the property value.
Right. Is that something you're able to do?
Yes, I can bring pictures of the, we'll be, we'll be putting in a ninety-five Clayton, a sixteen by seventy-six. But if, if you need pictures of what will be coming in, I have no problem with obtaining those and coming to the next meeting.
I'd be fine with that.
Dan?
Yeah, just, I mean, just make sure that it's.
Right, I completely understand.
And I, I think that we had put in the ordinance at one time, something that it couldn't change the footprint. The actual, the normal, the existing footprint.
Correct?
Yeah, if they, if the footprint changes, then of course that involves a land use permit, which Greg had to, had to fill one of those out too.
Or is the site changing?
It is just a little bit. What's currently there is a twelve by sixty-five, what we'll be putting in is a sixteen by seventy-six.
So there'll just be a form that you'll need to get for.
I can give you one of those next month. Permit ready for you.
Yeah, you just get that filled out and there's a twenty-five dollar fee for that, and then like I said, have the pictures and.
Okay.
That'd be it, wouldn't it?
You know, if the water.
Yeah, 'cause I, I already discussed with the gentleman that called me about the water bill, and they sent him.
Hook him up.
Yeah, he, he, he sent that to us as well. And who do I need to talk to to see if we could come to like some sort of settlement on the bill because it's been vacant? But we've still been being charged a trash charge.
Mm-hmm, so our ordinance state, I own a property that's vacant also and I pay monthly for it. You know, it's in our ordinance as far as. Yep, whether or not anybody's there or not, they're still, because as far as our, all of our fees, whether or not.
That property is still on our trash contract, so I still pay for that total.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And the price is based off of everybody as far as on that.
Right.
The fees that's been charged to that property is only the base fees for the sewer, which because we own the septic tank. And we pay a contract to have those pumped, even if it hasn't been used, he still goes and checks them and pumps them.
Okay.
So that's one that you get charged, uh, the trash, the hydrant fee, and the stormwater fee. Are all fees that get charged whether the water's warm or not.
Okay. And then if, of course, if we don't pay it, there's the penalties.
Well, the gentleman, yeah, if it's late, then there's penalties, which I've been mailing those bills ever since your last tenant moved out and, and nobody's ever paid them. That's been like three years ago.
Have you been mailing them to this address or to D and J Homes?
The address that I have, no one's ever called and gave me a different address to mail them to.
Okay, well, it shows here that it's the main office address, so, okay. Well, that's all I need to know and I'll work on getting that bill taken care of.
Cause the last tenant that was there was before the laws changed, so I sent her the information from the last tenant, but she's still owed one. She moved out, 'cause of course she didn't even tell me she moved out, when she moved out. And then after I put it back into D and J's name, the bill that I've been sending ever since then.
Okay, okay, alright. So, pictures of the home going in. The land form.
Permit.
The permit, twenty-five dollar fee, and get that water bill and sewer trash caught.
I know, when Jerry was alive, there was many a times that he would send somebody with a stack of cash like this to catch it up. So he could put another tenant in there, but of course, since he passed away, it just, it.
Don't worry, it'll probably be me and the same thing.
Okay. I'm gonna get your land use permit right now while Terry talks.
Okay, alright.
Bring the cash to the street, girl.
No, we can't have the cash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry?
Well, I am here to bear good news and, um, about Fountain City Forward, representing Fountain, Fountain City Forward. Um, esp- especially to tell you about our next project and that is our hometown holiday in the park. But I also wanna thank you because you have been very supportive of us. I know you've had some letters that have helped us. With different projects and so I want, I want you to know how much we appreciate that. And then I'm gonna just give you an end year report of what we've accomplished, so, um, we hosted the Eclipse Activities, the five key ways. Pet walk and community art show competition, we hosted a block, some of block party in the park that included.
Okay.
Other community organizations, um, we support the creation of a little free library over here at the Northeastern Early Learning Center. We've hosted business pop-ups saluting local businesses, and we've created hometown t-shirts for folks to show their pride. And we've created a old Newport cookbook documenting our town's history and its wonderful cooks. And both of those are available for you to buy on our website. Please buy them, they're awesome, especially the cookbook, because it's, it's more than just a cookbook. Um, we also coordinated with county commissioners, uh, specifically Jeff Plaster to have the flashing speed signs. Check placed at both ends of the town at no cost, um, to the town, and Jeff just confirmed that yes, we'll be getting those.
On twenty-seven or?
On twenty-seven.
Yeah, even better.
On twenty-seven, at no cost to town, which is even better.
Yes.
Um, we secured a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the Wayne County Foundation earmarked for town beautification projects and, and community movie nights. And we also met the requirements to apply for official status with the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, um, OCREP. As a downtown affiliate network opening even, which will open up even more opportunities. And we were recognized by Forward Wayne County, um, Main Street Wayne County, for advocating on behalf of the residents to make positive change in Fountain City. Um, so, you guys helped us because you've helped support this and, and, and you know most of the people in this group are doers, so we're, we're gonna continue to do. And that includes that, um, holiday home, which will have holi, hometown holiday event that'll happen on December seventh. As you know, we planted a tree in the park, um, the members of Fountain City Forward have indulgently watering it. I think they're done with the watering part right now, so it's gonna be, um, a ceremonial tree lighting, caroling in the park. Um, asking residents to bring ornaments in memory of loved ones or just represent their family. There's gonna be, cookies are gonna be donated by Martin's Country Mart, um, Roasted, which is a coffee truck owned by some Northeastern alumni. Will have drinks for purchase, there'll be, uh, enjoy Santa, pictures of Santa, and, um, there will be a carriage there, a beautiful carriage there. And some miniature horses, n- not reindeer, but miniature horses there for the little kids, so. That's our next big project, we're looking forward to that and we're looking forward to doing even more exciting things for the town.
Terry was gonna be saying both.
No, oh, yeah, Terry, Terry, Bond is gonna be saying.
He's going there and Terry.
We do have, we do have a Santa.
So I'm gonna clear this, you are, you guys are decorating your tree, 'cause I was asked by Libby Hardwick. If she, if you guys wanted lights on it, or if you guys were.
Okay, the, the new tree?
Right.
Yeah, we're decorating it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought and that's why I told her.
But she's helped, she's welcome to come and join.
Because she does, she puts up Christmas lights in the gazebo.
Oh, yeah, and, well, the gazebo, do you think it'll be finished by December?
Uh, it should be getting a call, they told me middle of November it should be getting a call.
Because that might, I hope so, because that might be something that we can incorporate if she's continuing to decorate that.
And I, and on that, I would like to, if we can get it done, I wanna do like a dedication ceremony from what I've done, what we've done. Down the sidewalk and whatnot.
That would be awesome.
Did you guys get the bricks fixed?
Uh, I, so I, we've got the whole right side fixed.
Okay.
If I get time this week, I was gonna try to get the whole left side. I got it dug out, I just gotta lay the gravel and border bricks, so.
Yeah, did Walker tell you about the one that the, the initial was wrong?
Yeah, it was, she wanted a different last name or something.
No, the initial was supposed to be D and it's an A.
On the Williams one?
Sierra, not Sierra Burton.
All different Sierra.
They're Sierra Fisher. Should be Sierra D Fisher and Brett A, it's Candy's, Candy Jackson's son, I can't remember his last name. But both of them have the middle initial A and Sierra should have been a D. And I checked my list and it, that's plainly an A and a D. So he messed up when he was carving them.
No, I mean, do we have any more that need to be made up?
No, uh, Walker took, that's what I'm talking about, Walker took the list, 'cause I had already got a list of like twelve people. So he went ahead and took the list and the bricks to him and had them made, and they set them in the ground. And it's one of Candy Jackson's son and I forget niece, I think is Sierra Fisher. She had them put together and he put the wrong middle initial on Sierra, Sierra's name, so.
Well, I, I, it looks wonderful.
Yeah, it is.
It's been a long time coming to get.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we've had that list going for.
Yeah, we just was trying to figure out how to do it without it being, getting destroyed by the weather or costing an arm and a leg to be able to put everybody's name on there.
Nice, and, um, so I guess that if, you know, maybe somebody could get ahold of Libby and say, hey.
I'll talk to her.
Join us and, um, and we can help her out too, and then, um, there was another, uh, something, they have an ornament, what, what?
But you said that's gonna be December seventh?
Yeah.
December seventh, at six thirty, six thirty until the cookies are gone, I guess, I don't know.
And then our December meeting will be before that, so we can bring it up and remind everybody.
Yeah, for sure.
Or your cookbooks.
Yeah.
We will.
Order them?
Yeah, 'cause there's, so as far as on your cookbooks, there's quite a few locals that have their own personal recipes.
It's all local people.
Yeah.
So they are, we took some recipes, we collected some recipes from some past historical cookbooks that have been, been out in the sorority cookbook or church cookbooks. And so we were able to add some of those, um, we solicited for other cookbook, for other recipes, so people have their, you know, their hometown or their mom's or their dad's. Recipes in there, and then it is filled with old pictures of the town.
Mm-hmm.
And it is, it's just really awesome, so.
It looks neat, the pictures I sent out.
Proud of it and, um, and so I, I just ordered four, so, so go on our website, our Facebook site and, and, and please order those. Because the, the proceeds from that will go to help us do even more projects.
And if you guys are okay with that, if we can get the gazebo put back together by then, I would like to do something that evening.
That, that's the other thing, I was, that I was, isn't it? That would be great.
Like a dedication of that.
I think that would be wonderful, perfect timing, 'cause you're gonna have a great audience there and.
Yeah.
Of community and that's.
I wanted it done before now, but mother nature changed my mind, so.
Yeah, that was kinda my, I was coming back to buy a t-shirt on Sunday, but everything got ruled away before I did it.
T-shirts are still, you can order the t-shirt online.
I'm gonna go on too.
In fact, we're ordering green gold ones.
I wanna, I want. I mean, you didn't have any purple ones.
But we love green.
And they're twenty-five dollars you pay.
I think so, twenty-five, the bricks?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, that all you got?
Oh, yeah.
Paul?
I just wanted to complain about the leaf picking. I just wanna see your face.
Keep your sticks out.
I think you guys do the heck of a job.
He came in the office early and he's like, and I'm teasing by the way, I said, I knew that.
No, well, the, um. Yeah, time off.
Oh, I don't care.
As far as unfinished business, so I, I sign off on all of the time cards and time off and stuff like that. We started the, changed their time on.
You know, this is, that's not on the agenda.
Okay, then I guess we can't do that, wait till next one, you're supposed to put that on there, but anyways.
Well, I'd mentioned it, so.
Yeah, totally me bringing up doing department reports and you waited till, when is that the end?
Yeah. Okay, that's fine, we will do it next month.
Okay.
Can I get, everybody, everybody done? Approve, can I get a motion to approve claims and payments?
Make a motion for claims and payments.
Second. On favor?
No.
I can't write that fast.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aight.
Everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.